Test.
Okay.
How's everything going?
I think, Steve, I think you have to split them.
Yep.
Separate them. Look like something.
About something.
From what I can see, they gave everything that he asked. You know, I mean, I don't, he made a long statement that sits within writing.
Right.
A lot of it. In fact, the issue was, they looked at things that he requested, what the police did. They responded to things he requested. If he was thinking he wanted something else, you know, from the request. He seemed like he can't stay in shape. He can't push. Other people have requested that. And that they didn't give anything. It's kind of like, I don't know, hearsay that, you know, they didn't get. They know they need it. We don't even know what they want. So, yeah, I'm trying to get that out.
Got to sign up for that.
Right, yeah, right. But the director doesn't know it won't.
Right, and he doesn't have, he doesn't have the, he's a traffic, he's a traffic specialist. He's not a traffic.
And then, I mean, do you understand they weren't supposed to put a tent on it?
No.
It just pulls down, it's like. Well, I think, I think there's an issue about, the police may feel that if you don't have a sign every certain number of being a violator could be not taken out. And then, well, the main thing is, to get notice up there, it sounds like.
So, don't close a road and know that we don't have to come to the mall or buy. Some people know.
That's right.
So. That's what I'm saying. They don't think that we're, he didn't know.
No kidding, no kidding. At all places.
No parking, ring design. Which was, now, the scope of what he should have done in that area. He should have done this, he tried it. And said, I don't know enough about this. I need to have an engineer take care of it.
That's, that's the form of what I had. Of course, I was, I just, sure. And then I could tell.
Yeah.
And.
Yeah.
Really, I'm gonna show them. Yeah, I was. I needed a couple of big yellow ones.
Yeah.
The yellow one. But they were, they were, they were showing me.
They came back.
Yeah, we'll see, we'll see when it happens. And it's not that far. It's every hundred feet. And then it greets up against the shade. It can't, we're not.
What I'm saying is, so.
Thank you. Yeah. I'm going to go after some.
Do you know that?
Yeah. We think, we think that. Quickness.
Sign. That's right.
I know, I was going to say that.
I knew you were. I knew you wanted to.
Yeah. No kidding.
Finally set him free.
Next time. Oh, yeah, see what he says.
I'm just saying, I could have broke out in Broadway song.
Sounds good.
At that point.
You know, is there a guideline for accepting or an actual release discussion, or, uh?
It's all good.
I'm just curious, you know, what can I, how creative can I get with my language?
I'm fine.
You, you are restricted to these five terms.
I think we're gonna test, put a. Oh, yeah, I mean, who should you give this more investigative story work?
Right. Like, like some, some real digging in investigation.
It makes sense that we, you know, we do our due diligence and.
Exactly. It's what we're all about.
Sample and pour.
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
You know, you know, think about how many collective hours it takes on these across every city. And think about what can be done in two years.
Yeah.
You know, what every college student who's eighteen registered to vote.
Yeah, whatever you end up with.
It's gonna be done, yeah. I don't see that even, I mean, sure, it'll be close, I guess, but, you know. Single motivating force to bring the college kids of the hospital.
Bring them right to the table here. Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, no, I, no, that's what I'm talking about. They're going to.
Resume city council meeting Tuesday, September fifteenth. We have a joint city council and planning board public hearing. To clear the hearing open, ask the planning board members to come forward, please, and join us in some configuration around the table. Um, I will ask that everybody, um, should be aware that we have a memo from city solicitor John Barrett here regarding this, this hearing. Make sure, everybody got one of these? Okay? And councils should also have a discussion for topics that the planning board had, had sent to us. Here, everybody got one? No, we're, we're, John just asked. Do I have to do this? You have to have a regular hearing like this?
It's not basically that kind of.
Okay.
Okay.
Councillors were here, there was a petition one sixty-five fifteen, the Pittsburgh City Council, to amend chapter one eighty-one of the Code of City of Pittsburgh by adding language pertaining to registered marijuana dispensaries. Yeah, councillors, the, the council had voted to submit a petition to change the ordinance for medical marijuana dispensaries to be only in medical or industrial zones. We brought the planning board here to meet with us, for both of us to get together and have a group discussion. And then ultimately, the council, if they so wish, can, and take a, the actions that they want. So I guess the first thing to do is ask the planning board if they have met and if they have any recommendations, and that can start the, a discussion.
Okay. Thank you.
Paula?
See if this works. I'm not sure.
Do anything to you.
Thank you. Okay, great.
But it's on, so.
It's on. Thank you for having us this evening. The board would like to, you know, provide its recommendations and assistance with the medical marijuana overlay. We have had some several discussions regarding our proposed ordinance. In it, there are two things primarily. One, even though the definition of a registered mari-, um, registered marijuana dispensary, it includes both the cultivation, manufacture, and dispensing. So it's all three. The ordinance would go, proposed, is to, the define, separate out manufacturing and the cultivation separately from the dispensing. Because currently, we do have one facility that it was been determined by this, by the city that it was allowed by right as a manufacturing use, which is the cultivation-only portion of it. It is a, and in, in, currently in an industrial district. The board proposes, at this point, however, to allow, continue with allowing that manufactured use by right in the industrial and light industrial similar to manufacturing. However, just providing a site plan review requirement. Because right now, this was, there was one applicant that did come in and present to the board that was not required to do so. And it was very appreciated that they came in to discuss with the community about that. So, we were proposing, at least to continue with the, allowing the by right of the manufacturing sighting within those zones, as was determined by the solicitors being an allowed use. However, we just put site plan review requirement on, layered on top of that to given, again, present to the city about just what was occurring at the facility and go over some general city sites.
In response to that, Paula?
Certainly.
Would that be that the applicant would go before the planning board for site plan review?
Yes.
You, the planning board would then approve, if, if the planning board approved it, that is, does it then come to the council for a final?
No.
For?
It's by right.
By right.
So only site plan review.
It's.
As currently, there is, um, in the ordinance, there is a site plan review requirements for certain activities exceeding certain gross floor areas or adding parking in certain areas. We always evaluate the site plan for setbacks in buffers and sidewalk traffic. The architecture of the building, so we do look at whoever trips those requirements. Right now, an RMD citing in an existing facility, if they're not changing any parking or anything, there's no site plan review requirement. So that's why, um, it would be recommended to amend the site plan provisions in the ordinance as well to say an RMD would require site plan review.
Okay. You want to continue on, or Council Dean Tally, you want some question on that part, or?
Many questions.
You have many questions.
Just, just to be clear, I'm sorry, just clarification. We're just talking about manufacturing, growing it. They don't sell it here.
Right.
Like the one in Unappert Road, they're selling in, what'd you say, Mike? Needham?
Newton.
Newton?
Newton.
So, none of, there's no traffic, people going and buying things, none of that.
This is not about the dispensary side of the business.
No, not yet.
Not yet.
We're trying to break them down, because that's kind of the.
That.
All impact.
Council, that's why I was asking if your questions had to do with the.
Wipe the slate clean of all of my questions, because I have a lot of questions about the other side of the equation. We want to.
If I could just further why it's being split apart, that in the DPH process, the, whoever has dispensary is required to separate those two facets of the business. And that, when we're looking at this, the manufacturing aspect is, you, that's something that is advantageous. It's jobs, it's investment in properties. And it doesn't really have many of the potential downsides that a dispensary would have.
Yep.
So that, in our, our discussion, this is something that would be welcomed as a source of jobs, source of tax revenue, investment in industrial properties. But, and I think, the dispensing has more potential downsides, and that's where later on, we pay more attention to restricting and controlling to make sure that's done right.
Yes. So that, that's why what you have before you was amending the table of principal uses to put in cultivation and manufacture only, similar to what is there now, like mirroring the manufacturing use. So that's, that's the proposal there. And then, again, amending the site plan review section of adding this one line about citing construction or expansion of RMD requires site plan review. So we're trying to, like, at least add that layer of acknowledgement to the city, so they, they're not just citing here, you know, just by right, but they do have to come to a board and present the plan.
So page one is just for that.
Right, so that's your recommendation on the manufacturing?
Yes.
Correct.
Manufacturing.
Okay, so we've heard that.
So there's one portion of it.
But questions on the manufacturing component?
Paul, man, I mean.
Council Joseph?
Board representative for that area, it's nice that we're gonna have a marijuana manufacturing facility two doors down from our methadone clinic. Okay, and it's great that Pittsburgh's gonna be known for that. So whether it's jobs or not, it's still a reputation of the city that I think will be tarnished once again, even though it's by right. The attorney representing the facility has said that they want to get together with me in the ward, so we could do a meeting. There's been nothing, no contact by them to get together with me, even though it's been suggested several times, and I've said, ready to go. But it's just, it's just the way that they're going about it. It would be nice to be able to do that with the residents in that area, to let them know what's coming in. And, and I've heard concerns from people throughout the city of what's going in our city, and that we have no right, because it is by right that they can manufacture, even though it is marijuana. So it's just, it's just, it's just another tarnish for our city. And it's by right.
Council Green?
My question would be, are you as a board looking to further regulate or further add in any more stipulation that if another facility wants to come in and manufacture only, which they can do by right in certain areas as it stands right now, that you would have more regulation over that? I mean, it was nice that they came before you and said, hey, we don't really have to, but we are. But I'm worrying about, you know, two years, five years, ten years down the road, when, when it's more popular, perhaps. So are you looking to put in more regulation into manufacturing sites?
Right, right now, it, as proposed, is, it's just site plan review, so it doesn't restrict the number. That number is regulated by DPH at this, at this time.
And even hearing our pleas on like, oh, please, you know, and, please don't bring any more of these type of services into Pittsburgh, that's, wouldn't be enough, or it wouldn't be enough as a collective board to go before them and say, hey, we want some more right, other than just a site plan review, to say whether it would or would not be good for Pittsburgh?
We're looking at some, like, you could, there is always a potential to add special permit requirements, looking as well. Since it was looked at, that it's allowed manufacturing use, it was looked at where this can manufacturing go. Right now, on the table, it says industrial, light industrial. And it says by special permit for our central business di-, the central business district and commercial and automotive. Meaning they would have to meet special permit criteria if they even want to be in those particular zones. That can be looked at too, as just restricting it to industrial and limited industrial.
Right, I would just like to have.
But it was just looked at as this is a, it's just a business enterprise, and it's not as much as, um, and we'll go into the dispensary, which is a lot, can have a lot of controversy.
Right. And how many jobs, the particular site that is in manufacturing, how many actual physical jobs are they providing in that facility with people?
I believe when they came before us, they said between eighty and ninety. Am I correct?
I don't remember that.
When they, when they got up to speed.
I think.
Fit out, it's more like twenty or so.
Right.
But once they, if they fill the entire eighty thousand square feet, there would be more.
And in that eighty thousand square feet that is the potential there, they will be servicing more than people from Newton?
No. It's not.
It goes there.
There's no.
Right, but they are grow, their manufacturing.
For one.
To service or to provide that to.
Their, their one dispensary.
Okay, which is in Newton?
Yes.
And?
They can't, aside from emergency regulation, provide it to any other dispensary. It's only for their own dispensary.
So Newton, as a community, is there enough demand for it that would fill that eighty thousand foot building?
It's a good question. When they finally get up and going, I don't know what they, we know what the demand is throughout the state. You know, it's behind the process, I'm sure.
I don't know what the demand is.
Well, I'm thinking Newton certainly doesn't have the population of Pittsburgh.
No, but they're regional, but they're regional.
Marijuana growing, I mean, that's a huge amount.
Four times the size of Pittsburgh.
Newton?
It's packed in close to the city.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay, I was thinking that it was a smaller population than Pittsburgh.
It's a city of seventy or eighty thousand people. But it's, um, also, it's, it serves as, their dispensary there serves as a regional base as well. It's more than just people living in Newton. It's that entire suburban Boston one-twenty-eight area that would be potentially using it.
It's not, because it's, the cities are not town by town, it's a region by region. So wherever someone locates it, it has to be shown that it meets a regional need.
Okay. Which has me even more scared now, because I'm just thinking of central mass as a region.
They look at, with the counties, Worcester County.
Yeah.
Worcester County.
All right.
We haven't gotten to the hard part, which is what you're talking about.
Right, thank you.
Council Dean Tally is next, but before we do that, Council Bean has had a request that, Paula, that you introduce the members of the planning board, so people know who's here.
Good.
We have names, like.
I know. Yeah. I'm Paula Karen, Chair.
I'm Paul Fontaine-Buyes, Chair.
Yep.
Michael Hurley.
Kristen Sweney.
Andy Van Hazinga.
A.J. Turigney.
Mike DePietro. And I'm not on the board, but I work for the city, Mike O'Hara.
Thank you. Council Dean Tally.
Is there a reason why we can't just have this?
Be in the light industrial and industrial?
No reason why.
That is actually a conversation we had before we came here.
Yes.
I would, my preference is, that would be, that would be where it goes. I, I, I guess my point is, is that there are concerns about manufacturing of this product. And the concerns that I have been hearing are legitimate concerns in the field of security. You're gonna have a marketable drug being manufactured in the city that is, in my opinion, going to breed an element to this city that wants to get that drug. Maybe I'm over, maybe I'm exaggerating a little bit, but, you know, unless this place has ten, twelve-foot walls erected with barbed wire and security guards around the place, I'm just concerned about break-ins, stealing the product, uh, things of that nature. And this is concerns that the residents have voiced to me about that, is the security aspect of it. So I've got to assume that, aside from the site plan, the police department, I, I'm hoping there are state regulations that dictate that these businesses have to provide some level of security for these facilities. And my goal throughout this whole process is to restrict these businesses as much as we can, because I believe the original intent down the road was to ban everything outright, but we cannot do that per the AG's office. So, when this whole law passed, I immediately said, I'll bet my life savings that not only will Pittsburgh be a place for the manufacturing, it will be a place for the distribution. Why? Because we're snakebit. We seem to attract those kinds of businesses, but we can't get something where you go in and sit down and eat. I know it's a radical concept for a lot of people to grasp. So the manufacturing piece of it is less concerning to me, except from a security standpoint, because of the jobs that were talked about, the fact that it's industrial, and we are in desperate need of industrial, God knows we don't have any of it as it is. So, that's one thing. But I want to make sure that aside from the site plan, that the police department has a stake in this in terms of ensuring through state regulation that these facilities are properly guarded and properly secured. Because that's what the state attorney's general's office was talking about as a piece of this, is the security aspect. So that's the concern I have, putting a facility down there, which is not too far from, from where residents live. So it's, it's a legitimate concern that they have. So I just wanted a little bit of information on that aspect of it, from what you might know, or from what the city solicitor knows about the regulations from the state level on security of these facilities.
It's pretty extensive.
Okay.
Because when they came in front of us for the site plan, that was one of our major questions. And obviously Paula can probably read better, because it's in front of her.
I've got the DPH regulation here, which goes into in-depth, and they have a sec-, whole security section for the, for the, for the RMDs. Let's see, disposal, limited access, safes and vaults and other equipment where it's used, locks, keys, outside perimeter lit, prohibit accessibility of security measures, combination numbers, passwords.
So, so who ensures that those are, those requirements are met?
DPH.
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 So they'll have their own people come down and inspect everything and certify that it's, okay. I just want to make sure there's a failsafe in there besides the site plan review.
We would be looking at at least the exterior portions, and they would describe the operations, and we would ask those questions at the time that they would, that they would present about their matters.
Okay, so, so on the manufacturing side, my only recommendation from where I sit is, I, I, I understand the methodology of, since it's manufacturing, we might as well just mirror what the manufacturing regs say, but, for zoning. But since this is more of an industrial facility, I'd like to just make it simple and keep it light industrial, industrial, and not have it in the central business, business district.
That was the entire rationale that we, when we, because we talked about this for half hour, an hour before we came here. That was the entire rationale. For now, we just matched it up with manufacturing.
Understood.
But we went back and forth about what really should be, do we even want to have a special permit hearing for something that we really won't have any reason to deny? So.
I, I guess from where I sit right now, ladies and gentlemen, it's, I can't support it in this current fashion unless it's restricted to light industrial, industrial.
So we'd be changing the, in that table there, from central business district to no, and CNA to no.
That's, of course, if the rest of the council agrees. That's just my personal preference. I, thank you.
Council Volshin?
I was gonna ask kind of the same kind of question. We're taking an industrial building, and I'm always told that we don't have a lot of industrial land, so we can't track businesses. And we're gonna put this in there for a, for growing pot. And I agree with Council Dean Tally, we ought to put it, look at it, uh, light industrial. Why take a commercial, industrial building where you can manufacture goods and hire people, a lot of people, versus just a handful of people do a specialty, specialty product and ship it to Newton, where they're gonna get the most money for it? And, and we lose a building, and we can't hire people in our own city, and then we got no jobs here, and we're not, we got no businesses besides drugs. So, I feel, I feel the same way he does on this. Take a good building, lay down, and just make it over for pot. We're gonna do it in light industrial.
In response to that, just in, in my private life, I work as a real estate appraiser. I used to specialize in appraising commercial and industrial properties. And I would do an annual survey of industrial properties in Pittsburgh and Leominster for the, the Foster Company, my previous employer. And sadly, the region has a lot of vacant, modern industrial space. That with the changing economics in the northeast and the country as a whole, manufacturing is not as economically viable in this area as it is in China or South America or other places like that. So one way to adapt to that is to, to develop specialty manufacturing, like especially medical devices or things that you can't manufacture in China to ship over. And this would be one area to use properties that are vacant and probably will be vacant for some time. And I think you have to adapt with the, the times and find other uses for these properties. Otherwise, a lot of them are gonna sit empty.
Council Clark?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to, if I could, just ask if we could, you know, the chief to get his opinion, if that's okay?
Has the chief's opinion?
Wasn't prepared to speak this evening in regards to this issue. Let me start off by saying, first and foremost, I, I understand what Council Dean Tally's saying, where the AG's office said we can't have that mentality, not in our backyard. But as a police chief, I have to adamantly say I'm opposed to any type of manufacturing, distribution, any sales or anything to do with marijuana. We have to keep in mind that in the upcoming elections, there's gonna be a big push to move forward towards recreational use of marijuana, where this could expand greatly down the road. So I think we need to proceed cautiously as we look to the future, where the election's gonna bring it next time around. So, from my standpoint as the chief of police, I would be opposed to it. I know we can't stop it, so if we can't stop it, let's, let's put a lot of regulations on it. So, thank you.
Thank you, chief.
Continue, Paula.
Certainly. I mean, that's, you know, taking those comments into consideration.
Yep.
The, I mean, the proposal we put forward was a by right with site plan review. It can go beyond that. You could say it's special permit in those districts, so they actually have to go through a special permit process as well, which is a fuller vetting. And it could be more extensive requirements on the manufacturing aspect of it. Someone way to look at it. Other communities have also looked at by right. City of Worcester did by right, but they did a three-hundred-foot setback to the, the children and the playgrounds and things of that nature as well. But they did it by right in certain districts with setbacks. Certainly, sorry.
With the air conditioning.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I, I mentioned that, you know, one proposal we put forward, because it was determined it was a by right type of reuse, was by right with site plan review. It can go beyond that, and we can say, add on, it's special permit. It's not by right. Can be still located in industrial, light industrial, but needs a special permit, which is a fuller vetting through the planning board or the council or whichever authority.
My opinion? I would want that. I mean, I, I believe that the, the more vetting that we can do and the more regulations that we can attach to it, um, is, is good for the city and, and good for the program ultimately. So, that's just an opinion, and it'll, I'll come back to the council, we'll determine. But I'm gonna say, hearing that, if, if we have the ability to do that, I would be, um.
I will say, just to play devil's advocate, just to, just to that one point, just by making it special permit, they will have, they'll start, they'll have to come to a board, your board, our board, someone.
Yep.
Your council, our board. But I can't particularly think of off the top of my head how you can make it more restrictive, other than make, calling it a special permit and calling it a site plan. And, I mean, unless, we, we can add it into here, even part of site plan review, we can say, you know, it's, it's allowed in these districts. We even talked about setbacks for the latter part, but we'll get to that. But for now, we're just talking about manufacturing. Even if you make it special permit, aside from maybe adding a setback, I don't know how else you can change it to make it more restrictive. Because the one thing I encourage everyone to do is to look through the DPH regulations, because they are very thorough. At least as far as menu, particularly manufacturing, you know, what they need for security and what's required of, you know, site requirements and employees and, you know, all that stuff. It's, all that's covered, a lot of that's covered in there. It's just, you know, we could make it special permit, we need to go a step further there and say, is it gonna be via the council or via the planning board? Which obviously, you know, you can decide. But once you do that, you need to decide how you're gonna make it more restrictive, and I don't know how to do. And I don't know how to do it.
Okay.
So I think it's just, I think you're just calling it something different at that point.
And I'll just add, special permit does, the difference between that and site plan is that special permit allows you to set operating conditions and things where site plan is more the site and the building and the layout versus other types of conditions that maybe could be more extensive than DPH.
Councilor Beazall.
Thank you.
Jeff.
If I'm understanding this whole thing correctly, the state has given them the authority to actually grow medical marijuana. So the city, the only control we really have is where would the facilities be going and maybe setting up?
Processes.
Processes and this and that. But if somebody comes in with all the plans in place and everything, and they do everything to 100%, the city can't override what the state is giving them a right to do. Is that, am I correct in saying that?
That sounds accurate.
They have to meet special, we could define further some special permit criteria, but it can't be that you would exclude it. Special permit means it is a permitted activity, so as long as they meet the requirements, typically yes. To in order to deny a special permit is very difficult, it has to be very laid out to be defensible, to actually deny a special permit, because it is mostly for permissible uses.
So if we're setting up this type of arrangement ordinance, somebody comes before you and says, "We just found, we want to make this cure for cancer," they're going to have to go through the same thing that the people who have medical marijuana would have to go to produce their medicine, similar to if somebody wanted to make aspirins, and basically it's all controlled by the government, and they go in and inspect the facilities. Does our Board of Health have anything to do with inspections or the facilities, or is it all run?
I think it's all by DPH. Now, I'm a Republican.
I mean, certainly, you could make conditions for allowances for, with, and some provisions look at, like with 24 hours notice, allowing police, Board of Health, the Fire and Chief to be able to inspect or enter a facility.
Okay, so we're allowed to actually put that in the provision that the police can go in there, or our Board of Health, just to check out the facility, make sure that, I mean, it's still public health. We're still...
Yes.
The city's still responsible...
Yes.
To make sure whatever they're doing in there isn't going to kill anybody, right?
Well, it's the same way they would inspect another industrial facility. Let's say they, you know, they want to make sure that it's up to code or whatever, whatever the process is now, the building inspector might have, or Board of Health might have for giving notice to inspect the, you know, wood factory or what, you know, whatever the case would be. I assume it's the same, it's the same practice, it's just...
Thank you.
Councilor Caddy.
You were saying, were you saying it could possibly go in light industrial or industrial, or have you changed that to industrial?
It's right now, it was mirroring the manufacturing table, so it said light industrial and industrial.
River Street.
Or limited industrial.
River Street and Westminster Street. I think, Mike, our neighborhood business, commercial and industrial. I think we changed some zoning up there, I think. So if we, if we stayed with industrial, you could potentially have a manufacturing facility on River Street next to the Dairy Queen, across the street from the Dairy Queen, in one of the housing developments that are also multi-zoned.
Mm-hmm.
All right.
Yeah.
Could we, because I think years ago...
See the gray area?
Yeah, I know.
That is the industrial area?
That's leading to my question. Could we be so specific to require an industrial park? We have two industrial parks in West Pittsburgh that aren't filled, and although one of them has a housing project right behind it, which doesn't make sense, but could we be that specific if we, if we're going to have to do this? Because I would not like to see it on River Street, I would not like to see it on Westminster Street. Could we be so specific to put it in industrial park?
You can define the space, yes. When we look further, as long as it's not zoning it out.
As long as it's not so restrictive that in essence it's too difficult or impossible.
Right.
I mean, I'll defer to Attorney...
When you say maybe in industrial district and 300 feet from a residence, surrounded by residences, and they can't do it.
So what I'm saying, the worry is, I don't know how many other gray areas there are in the city. I think there's more than just River Street, Westminster Street, but certainly, certainly you wouldn't, you'd want those areas to be used for commercial and neighborhood business. You wouldn't want it manufacturing.
Right now, it's tough to actually put commercial in the whole industrial district. It's industrial.
I know. But that would be my work. If we can be so specific as to put it into an industrial park, there's plenty of room in the industrial parks.
The, yes, it can be wherever you want to zone it to be. One of the things that was mentioned or detailed to us is the type of facility that they would be looking for, so whether or not like a new, that new facility, or does it make, do they, this type of use more befitting of an older type of a structure, type of use? So it's whether or not the industrial park you're citing even has that.
Does your board want to define this with a dispensary, or could we just take one step at a time? Right now, let's act on where we'll have the manufacturing located, and then come back to the second, you know, to dispensaries, so that we have a little bit of time to like filter out this and think this thing out. Because my second suggestion, if we could do that with manufacturing, I would think I'd want to do it with dispensaries. I don't want them...
You're moving into the next segment, and I'll just, just a little summary.
We've got a whole bunch of people who want to talk on this segment, so if you're just...
It's just something called an overlay district, which is where, we're talking about specific citing, is where we'd recommend where you have particular parcels or area, that that's the overlay district and where it can be cited.
My question was answered, that we could be that specific, and I think that's a good thing.
We'd have to create an overlay district, let's say in one or multiple, if, let's say you want to do industrial parks. You'd have to have an overlay in the industrial park, because it's, right now, they're part of either industrial or limited industrial. So you'd have to have an overlay district that's for this use and whatever you want in that, you know, that specific area.
Can be more parcel by parcel, and it's not limited to industrial. You can have, if the parcel seems appropriate, you can do that. If it's zoned something else, whatever you put the overlay on is allowed. So it's...
Thank you.
Counselor?
Yeah.
If we currently put it on an overlay district for industrial or limited industrial, that's one thing. If we said we want it only to be in an industrial park, which personally doesn't exist, we could also do that too. However, we're changing the regulations.
Councilor Bean.
Counselor Hay, this is one of the procedural questions. In the past, when we've done zoning amendments or zoning changes, it's simply the planning board will meet, and then the planning board will come with a recommendation to the council, and then we act on that recommendation. Is that the same case here that we'll go through this process tonight of a hearing, a joint hearing, kind of you're feeling us out, then we will get a recommendation from the planning board to come back to that we would take action on? Is that...
And then it will go to an ordinance.
There's no action tonight, there's just...
That's correct.
Okay. I just want to make sure the procedure is correct.
I think that's correct, Counselor Bean, as am I, resident, that, and I tried to deal with that in that little memo.
Right.
Because I wasn't sure, because this has taken kind of a different than usual sort of approach, because the petition was filed by the council, with the council referred to the planning board. So tonight, you are having a joint public hearing. And it's my expectation that after the public hearing, if the council closes this public hearing tonight, the planning board may either close this public hearing, or it may continue it and continue deliberating until it can make its report back to the council and recommendation as to what the planning board recommends. And then it would be up to the council to either accept that recommendation or amend it and pass an ordinance.
I just want to, we're not taking any action tonight because we don't have, because we need the report from the planning board, so this is really just discussion.
Okay.
Thank you. And I appreciate the work and the effort that the planning board's done.
Yes.
I was reading, when you handed us this memo, particularly the latter part of, you know, we'll make a vote on our recommendation, and I don't know, obviously, our chair, I guess, will decide when that's going to happen. I was anticipating our recommendation was going to be at some point tonight, but whatever. You wrote in there in Section 5 that you'll receive our report when 21 days have elapsed, and we can't deliberate via email, our next meeting's not for a month. How does that work?
Well, again, Paula, that was just a suggestion, and that was only trying to lay out what the law requires, that the council can wait until the planning board gives its report. But the law says that if the council doesn't get the report within 21 days after the close of the planning board's hearing, that it could take action on it.
Right.
I think our situation is a little bit more convoluted, because we, although we had a draft ordinance that was submitted to the council, I think it needed a lot of work. And I, for myself, I would like to thank the planning board for the work that you folks have put into this. And I think that you've come up with a number of good ideas. So what I would like to see, quite frankly, is the planning board reporting back to the council with a specific ordinance that the councilors all can see, and they can vote yea or nay on the different elements of that. I presume with your recommendation that that's what you would recommend the council.
The 21, right. Right. The 21 days doesn't start until you close your hearing.
That's fine. And even if it did, we could meet separately. I'm just trying to make sure when we leave today, we all know what we're doing, so...
Yep.
Counselor Green.
My question would be, what was the permit fee, or what was the fee to allow this manufacturing plant to go in?
That I'm aware of, there was no requirement for them even to come before the board. There's no fee.
Before we created this ordinance.
Right. Is there something that we can add in that ordinance that says that there will be a fee?
Well, there's an application fee for site plan or special permit.
$300.
$300.
I mean...
But that's what we do for every business, in every development, too.
We can change the fees, this fee structure can be changed through the planning board to change our fee schedule.
Would that be across the board, or would that be specific to this?
And we'd have to check with the city solicitor whether or not we can certainly define out a special permit for a particular use, like a RMD separately.
Can you charge one use...
Versus special permit fee, a special permit fee overall versus special permit fee for a particular use.
The general rule about what fees you can charge is that they have to reflect your actual costs and in the, your administrative costs in entertaining the process, whatever the process, your expenses for publication, whatever you think might be administrative expenses. You can't just say, "Well, this is the type of thing, we just want a large, you know, application fee because that's what we want." That would probably not, that would be viewed as a tax and would probably be stricken down by the court if it was challenged. So if you can say that an application for this type of facility is going to require more administrative costs, and I'd have to say, wouldn't it require any additional publication requirements? You know, maybe you could have a slightly different one, but you wouldn't be able to put in something that might be seen as prohibitive to that particular use.
The, do we have any restriction on the people that would be working at this facility? Are they, are they...
DPH has a criteria for backgrounds.
Is that laid out in that, in that big form that you have?
It's my fine print, but this is the DPH regulations, double page, double sided.
Okay. At some point, can I, can we get a copy of that?
Yes. I actually emailed it online. I emailed it, the link to the DPH site with this regulation on it. It's got a lot more helpful information about the RMD facilities as well. I also had emailed out a presentation, Medical Marijuana Massachusetts, by Kay Doyle, solicitor.
Again, I'm just trying to, you know, operate with the confines of what we by right, what we have to allow them to do, but also to keep in mind that, you know, just because something comes along and it's a business, doesn't always mean that it's good for us, as you know.
Mm-hmm.
So, you know, I want to keep this as restricted as possible so that it doesn't, so that it doesn't burden the police force, so that it doesn't burden our Board of Health, so it doesn't burden you as a board when we get inundated because Pittsburgh is easier, because Pittsburgh can. You know, I'm tired of that mentality. So I like there to see lots of regulation and lots of restriction within the boundaries that we're allowed to do.
So let me, if I can summarize a little bit, getting that feedback that site plan by right, not exactly in favor, that it's like some additional criteria protections, probably through a special permit process. And that special permit process can either be, we can either go by right in, again, the industrial district, or you can, we can work further on in overlay about where that should go and still require a special permit.
Most importantly, who would be the special permit granting authority?
And who would be the special permit granting authority? Can be the council, could be the planning board, could be the ZBA, could be, whatever you define.
Could that not be both?
No.
Like, could it not be a recommendation, they come to you first, you hear what they have to say, approve their application, and then you provide us with a recommendation, and they'd have to come before us like our special permits do, that say, oh, you know, the planning or zoning board was in favor of X, Y, and Z, but was opposed to A, B, and C, and then we can make a decision based on the recommendation that we get from your board?
I know your rules well, but I think if you have a special permit, you can ask for our recommendations.
Right. Which is what we do.
Or any board, ZBA. I mean, we could put it in here, but I think right now you could, anything you could ask us. Because when you guys hear like the water park, you asked us for recommendations on that. The same, exact same idea.
So what we'll do, counsel, really is, we'll make a determination, if we want the final say-so, we do that with recommendations from them.
Okay.
Or we allow them to have final say-so.
Yeah, and you're dealing with a special permit, special permit granting authority, you can ask for mandatory referral to fire department, Board of Health, police department as well.
Yes.
Which we traditionally do for, you know, larger subdivisions. We ask the fire department, can you get trucks in there?
Right.
Special permit goes to all of the official board.
Thank you. Yes, thank you.
Counselor Koushmerik.
I take slightly more liberal stance on this, and admittedly, I'll be putting myself on an island on this issue. But the state treats this as a, as a medical treatment now. They've discussed this at length, that's why they've put so many different protections and regulations on what we can and cannot legislate at the municipal level. So I wouldn't necessarily advocate for the widespread use of prescription narcotics on our streets or in hospitals. I too wouldn't deny or restrict Pfizer or Sanofi from coming here and manufacturing Adderall or Oxycodone. A last check for a city with economic need, vacant buildings, high unemployment rate. We spend countless evenings talking about these issues, yet I fear we're about, we're acting out of concerns over myths, not necessarily reality. We are curious to see statistics from the Northwest at this point, who have implemented much more liberal policies or state regulations regarding marijuana, as well as countless other states who have legalized medical marijuana as treatment, to see what concerns there are from police and public safety standpoints, as well as public health. The proliferation of medical marijuana in recreational use accelerates, not just here, but throughout the country. And I can't help but think that we might be look back 10 years from now, or 50 years from now, and think that we hurt our economic development opportunities for the city. And while I realize I am being much more liberal than many here with my stance on this, I would question, at the end of prohibition in the 1930s, what if Lynchburg, Tennessee, had made the proliferation of alcohol and manufacturing of alcohol so restrictive that Jack Daniels had decided to move to Maryland? Would they too be looking back in 50 years thinking, "That was our only economic development That said, you know, I have concerns like many, but I will not support any restrictive clauses to this ordinance. clauses to this ordinance that are not proven through statistics or otherwise. I think we have needs in this city. I think we need to think long and hard about the future, and I understand there are certainly safety, there may be safety concerns, but are there proven safety issues surrounding medical marijuana, is it any more dangerous in a paint facility, a prescription pharmaceutical facility, or a paper facility in this city? Thank you.
Counselor Joseph.
My question's...
Counselor Caddy.
I don't want Counselor Koushmeric to feel like he's on an island, because I'm going to say I'm not against this. What I'm saying is that I've been around a little while, and I've, I've seen the effects of drugs. I've been, I've been to other states where it's legal. It hasn't been, it hasn't caused more crime. But this being Pittsburgh, I'd like to move very slowly and cautiously. If we come up, if we come up with an ordinance or a zoning that allows it an industrial park, this, this industry is, is doubling and tripling every year across the United States. It has the potential of jobs, tax revenues, but it's in its infancy. And for our city to engage in something like this, I do believe we should put great restrictions on it, so we can move forward cautiously. And in time, in time, we, we could, as, as, as we can see where this industry's going, in time, we could loosen some regulations as other states do. But, you know, it's too, it's too new. It's too, it's, across the United States, it's too new right now. You know, let's kind of take a deep breath, kind of let's see what's going on. You said something that struck me. We have, we have a lot of buildings. You know, we, we need, we need to come up with the times. You know, we, we, things are changing. So again, having said that, and, and repeating myself, I'd, I'd like to, to move very slowly and cautiously. Let's keep our eyes, let's see what's going on, let's make sure everybody in the city, public safety, has a chance to touch this, so that we can draft something that we can live with. And then, maybe not this council, but a council after us can take another look at this. Let's see if we made some mistakes, let's see where the industry's going, and keep up with the times with everybody else.
I'd like to follow up on that. While I have heard many councilors tonight talk about restrictions and making sure they get things done right, I think Counselor Caddy is right on the mark, talking about the fact that we need to take our time and work this and get it right. That doesn't mean that we're all in opposition to it. The reality for me is that in Massachusetts, the law says that there is medical marijuana. And I don't think it is my responsibility, or this council's responsibility, to determine whether an individual who is suffering from chronic pain, and may have been doing it for 20 or 30 years, and their doctors, who are professionals, have determined that this is a course of treatment that will alleviate that pain and suffering for them. Not our place to tell them that they can't have it, or that, that they can't do it. And it is the law. So our job is to not to determine whether the law is, is right or wrong. Our job now is to determine how, within our community, we will govern the manufacturing, and later on, another discussion, the dispensing of the, the medical marijuana. That's what we're here to do. We're here not to determine whether medical marijuana is, is good or bad, or who should have it. Far be it from me. But let's work at making sure that we, as a community, have regulations that protect us, while at the same time, making this available to those people who have the need. And if it comes to an economic component of figuring out, how, how does it best aid the city of Pittsburgh to have some jobs, or have some buildings that are vacant be filled in, in some manner? It's a slippery slope, and we need to, you know, go slowly here, but it's, it's somewhere where we need to figure out that this is the finish line, and let's, let's figure out the best way to get there.
Counselor Deena Tally.
There is no debate in fact that we can't stop this. So that's not even an issue with me. The issue with me has been regarding the fact that the city of Pittsburgh is a Mecca for these kinds of agencies and these kinds of services. It's a statement in fact. We bear the brunt of North Central Mass and beyond. Other individuals from other communities come here for services. That is not a knock on people who need services. That is not a knock on the services being provided. That is not a knock on people who might need, have chronic back pain. Every time we talk about these issues, I get so upset because it always gets turned around into, ooh, you're against people who need services. It's not about that. I didn't say you said that, Mr. President.
That's what you just said, counsel.
No, I didn't say that's what you said. I said, people in general, not you.
Well, I want to make sure that you're not accusing me of making that statement.
No, I didn't say your name, so I'm not accusing you of anything. If I may continue, the fact is, is Pittsburgh has more than its fair share of these items. And I'm not afraid to say, because that's what the general consensus of the public is. And I want to restrict these kinds of services as much as possible, because my goal is to get them to go somewhere else. I'll just come out and say it. Why are we always the destination? I've had it with it, had it. It frustrates me to no end. But for the manufacturing side, I'm more lenient with that, because it's industrial, and we have no industrial as it is really in the city. So we'd be stupid not to accept them, because we desperately need it, because the residents are getting hosed 82% a year on the taxes. So we have to bring them in. I understand dispensing is another topic, which, boy, I'll tell you that, I could talk about two hours on the dispensing, but to me, they go hand in hand. It's to the methodology that I have. The original intent for me was to ban all these things outright. Let Lemonster have a business like this. Let, let Gardner, or Groton, or Lunenburg. It's always here. And when that law passed, first thing I said to myself is, you can bet yourself that both manufacturing and dispensing is coming here, because we're the magnet. Counselor Joseph mentioned earlier about the methadone. Again, nothing against methadone services, but we have more than our fair share of these things. Why aren't other communities sharing the burden? What is with this city that attracts these businesses? I will never understand. We have no problem getting social service agencies and nonprofits, but we have problems getting commercial and industrial properties. Never understand it. I don't get it. It's frustrating beyond all else. So I hope, not as much on the manufacturing, but on the dispensing side, which I know you'll get to in a minute, I would like to regulate the hell out of that. Okay? Because now, that's another service everyone from outside of Massachusetts is going to come here to get. And I'm sorry, there is a fact in stating that there is abuse with these things. There is abuse. There are reports everywhere there is abuse with these things, which goes back to the security aspect of the manufacturing process. There is no reason why I, or anybody else that lives near those facilities, shouldn't be concerned about the fact that this is a drug that is used by a lot of people, that is considered to be against the law in the United States, although states are adopting more than an ounce, it's, you know, less than an ounce, it's a fine and whatnot. But this is a drug that gets sold to minors, that gets peddled everywhere, and there's a legitimate concern on people's behalf that this would be right for someone coming in and trying to steal some of this stuff. I'm talking criminals. I'm not talking people who need it. I'm talking criminals here. Maybe I'm exaggerating, but it's a concern, and clearly, it's a concern of the states, when they had pages and pages of regulations on security for these things. There's got to be a reason why they have that, because they have the same concerns, too. I'm sorry, I'm going on a tirade here, but there is nothing we can do about this. People have asked me, can't you not have this happen? No, you can't. We can't. They have, if they, if they want to come here, we can't stop them. But there is no reason to be concerned about what that might mean. Pittsburgh is a special case. I believe that some of us, or a lot of us, have a hypersensitivity to these matters, because of the fact that Pittsburgh already has its fair share of these kinds of agencies. That is why it's hypersensitive. Maybe not Newton, but in Pittsburgh, it is. So that's why I've been speaking, I mentioned light industrial and industrial. Counselor Caddy mentioned doing an overlay district. I think the reason why I was against doing that originally was because of my fear that through meetings I had with Mr. Barrett and, and members of the planning board, it, there's some kind of guideline that says from the state level that if you restrict them too much, that could be grounds for you banning them. If you don't allow them, consider, allow them fair options, if you will. So if we do an overlay district, it requires more time and more effort to really map out exactly where it's going to be. And then you've got to make sure that the state's okay with it, because they might come back and say, no, you're restricting this too much. This is not what we had in mind. That was not the intent. So I don't want that to happen, but that's why I said, we'll make it, make it industrial, make it light industrial. If we can overlay district it without having that problem, I'm all for it. I'm all for, for restricting these services as much as possible, and I have no problem saying that. Thank you.
Counselor Green.
Being in the healthcare profession for the past 25 years of my life, I see patients on a daily basis struggle with chronic pain. So I am not against people seeking out methodology to help with that. So my statements are never, I don't want them to ever be taken as, you know, I, you know, only certain people should, you know, have access to medical marijuana. And it's a fact. If there's doctors right now writing prescriptions for medical marijuana. But I do think that we, as a city of Pittsburgh, have an obligation to our residents, to our business owners, that we are careful in the selection on where these facilities are allowed to operate. So my question is, are, is this an annual renewal for their license, or is there any type of license that will be issued to them specifically from the city, from whichever city they go in? And is that, could that be annually, or what, is there a timeline?
Depends on the type of permit. Site plan, once it's done, it's done. Once it's built, it's built to the site plan. A special permit can have provisions in it. It runs with the applicant. It can stop with the applicant, so it can't be transferred. It can stay with the property. So there's, you could put many conditions along in a, in a special permit. You can say it's good for one year, has to be renewed through, going through a whole special permit again, or a limited review, five years. So you can set a timeline for how long the special permit is good for.
Okay. Because again, I see the, I even hate to use the word economic benefit, but I see the point of taking our buildings, our light industrial buildings that are sitting empty, that potentially the city has, you know, that they may come back and become our city property, or, you know, have restrictions enough on these facilities that say, okay, we'll, you know, allow you in this type of a facility with the guidelines in place. So I just, I just want to make sure that we've got lots of options available on where we put these type of facilities. That's all. Thank you.
Counselor Tran.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm not going to go into discussing who uses it, why they use it, and so forth. My responsibility is to, to find where we're going to locate the manufacturing cultivation aspect of, of medical marijuana. I've had, as well as Counselor Deena Tally, had several meetings with department heads in the city. And putting on my planning board hat, I'm adamant that, that we should proceed with a special permit, as well as if we can look into the overlay district. And if that's not feasible, then, then I would prefer just limiting it to the industrial zoning. Another aspect that we're missing from this whole discussion is our communication with the Economic Development Department. One of their strategies, one of their strategies is identifying areas where they can rezone for commercial. So, so we need to communicate with them, we need to work closely with them to see if there are areas that we're looking at in the industrial zoning, that can be rezoned to commercial use. And if so, we have to eliminate that area from that industrial zoning, so that way we don't complicate our, our economic development plan going forward. So that's all, that's all the comments I have.
You do have those. You are working on a big project that involves some zoning changes that you, that MRPC has been helping hardcore with.
Okay. Taking into consideration this whole...
Well, once you change, once you were to change them to commercial, it would be out of these zones anyway. So, yes, is the answer.
Or maybe that we do have work before.
Yeah. Well, like I said, we, we could theoretically, at least the way it's written now, we could theoretically do this. And then, once, if you, if the council approves that zoning change, they would become commercial, so they would be taken out of eligible areas for medical marijuana.
It's just an overlay, so it's still industrial. Depends what you...
Oh, that's true. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. We were talking about an overlay, but we'll get there. That's another conversation.
And in addition, I just want to say, I really appreciate the work that you and this, this chairwoman and the whole entire board put into the very detailed recommendation in this ordinance, because, especially separating the dispensing portion from the cultivation and manufacturing, because the dispensing, the dispensing portion requires a lengthy discussion, and I would prefer taking one step at a time and addressing this before we get into that part. Thank you.
You have any more comment, Paula, regarding the manufacturing part, or did you get enough from the council?
No, I'm just trying to get the feel for when we come back, how to write it. So I'm looking at, like, we're taking it to a special permit, it seems to be. So just adding another, just adding, it's still a fee, and it's still coming before a board. It's still decide of which board's going to come to. I'm not sure if there's a preference there, the council or the planning board. We can put either or to choose at that time. And whether or not it goes into, and stays with the industrial, or goes into an overlay, in which case, there would need to be some discussion on where. And whether or not you'd like any setbacks from anything, even within that area.
Mr. Hurley.
In the letter we got from Mr. Barrett tonight, he recommended a timeline. And it was my question to the, Mr. Barrett, would be, in reference to a timeline, is there a timeline where you would like to see the planning board close its public hearing and send our recommendation to the city council?
The, I guess the number one timeline is that after the council closes its hearing, the, the vote has to be taken within 90 days. So that seems to me, if, if the council does close the hearing tonight, that would, you know, and the, the planning board needs, you know, more than 21 days. I'm not sure the council would be inclined to give the time that you can fully vet it. As long as it can come back to the council before that 90 days is up. I mean, quite frankly, I would say, sooner the better. I mean, the sooner that we have something in place, the less issues we may have if we have an applicant that's coming in when we're...
I'm not saying, rather than bounce this around, be it a city council issue or a planning board issue, hold the public hearing, and then tonight, we're going to close our public hearing in reference to your letter. Is there a time that the city council would like to see us close our, if the city council initiated petition that came before the planning board?
Yep.
I mean, it's almost like...
I think I can answer your question, Mike. I think our intent will be, by the latest, our next meeting, we'll handle our recommendation.
We'll have, we're going to take the feedback from this evening to revise this section, to come back before you, to see with our recommendation, and see if that needs even...
Well, you don't want us back in front. No, right, you won't come back before us. You'll, you'll send us your recommendation.
Close on the hearing, single record.
Recommendation, and then the council will take it.
And then you act on a petition as...
We can accept, we can accept it as you write it, or we can amend it.
I was going to say, we'll decide what looks good based on the conversation today and what we agree with, and then let them do with what they want to do.
Fine. That's, that is accurate.
Makes sense?
You can, yes.
So do we want to move on?
This is why, and whether or not you want to separate this ordinance change from the dispensary portion. So this moves separately than the other portion.
Counselor Barrett had a recommendation earlier that...
Because, you know, we, we have the public notice that we're considering this, this gives us a little bit more time to put something in place. But I suggest that we try to deal with the, the dispensary issue at this, maybe not exactly at the same time, but within this 90 days from the close of the public, the public hearing of the council, because if we don't, we have to start all over again. It gives a window for someone arguing that, well, they should be allowed as a right, because we have it regulated. because we haven't regulated it. So I, I would like to see, if possible, we try to handle both. And, and I believe that you folks are able to even propose some regulations vis-à-vis agricultural issues, right?
In here, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. So I, I think that'd be great to have dealt with, too. And quite frankly, you know, we may find there's certain things that need to be tweaked over the years, but I'd rather, quite frankly, see something on the books, as I think one of the council said, than to leave us kind of wide open, waiting for something that's perfect.
Certainly after the, I'm just to clarify, once the board closes its hearing and makes its recommendation, we send that to your office for verbiage before it goes to the council? Does that happen afterwards?
I would say it would happen afterwards. You, you close your public hearing, you make your recommendation, which I would presume would basically take the form of, of the proposed ordinance. And it doesn't have to, but that if you make your report saying, "Do this, do that," then the council votes on that, then they would send it to me to finalize it in ordinance form. But I think all, all the work, hard work is going to be done by you guys.
Send that.
By, by Paula.
By closing our hearing, if you even send that recommendation to the city council, recommending that they, a verbiage changes that they have would go to you.
Right. So that.
I do want to say, I do want to say because, I, no one else is going to say it because Paula, Paula's modest, but she has done the lion's share of the work on this, so our board thanks her as well.
Thank you. So shall we move forward to the?
Okay.
Second piece?
All right. This was page one, there's like seven pages after this, so, sorry. Just to keep it brief about an overall version of it, there, because there are some caveats. So I'll describe it overall. The idea with the dispensary, first of all, dispensaries are defined by DPH, both as cultivating, manufacturing, and dispensing. It's all in one definition. Proposals, just to keep with that definition, but throughout the ordinance, defined separately as we just proposed in the, on the table of use chart, manufactures, taking out manufacturing and separating out dispensing of what's required for each. It looks like we might be combining that back in again. The proposal with the RMD is to create an overlay district, so that we can very, be very specific about where those locations could go. So that was overall. And to do it through a special permit and, and site plan review. So it's an overlay district, special permit, site plan review. An overlay district can encompass any district. It doesn't have to be limited to industrial or limited industrial. It could be central business district, CNA, it's wherever you think that use of that land or that parcel would be most appropriate, and give options for, for when you're looking at other criteria and setbacks from other types of uses. So even, even within the overlay, excuse me, there's proposed to be setbacks from the uses that are described by DPH.
And just because I think it's going to come up, it doesn't have to just be the whole zoning districts as an overlay. You can create, by property boundaries, we can create an overlay, but we, we, if, if that's the intent of the council, then you'll have to define that, because we're not going to be able to, we're not going to be able to understand exactly what you want. So we kind of, I think our general consensus was a little more broad.
The board has some recommendations regarding the, the overlay district to being, when we go further into the document. It sets purpose, establishes that this is for the dispensary portion of it particularly. It establishes the purpose of being located near, like, regionally accessible roadways, high visibility areas. It's important to establish a purpose with special permits, because when you get an application and criteria, you have to basically compare it against it. And it gives you defensible, if it doesn't meet that criteria, it actually gives you a defense, an ability to deny it. But you have to define it and say it in writing in order to be able to deny it. If you don't write it down, it's going to be harder to, to further the permit, or deny the permit. So as of, in here, so it's number three at the top of this page is the definition used by DPH in a number of other communities. Some have tweaked it just ever so slightly. There was a mention there, Mr. Barrett, regarding the, the last line about the agriculturally exempt from zoning. The cultivation and processing accordance is not considered to be a manufacturing use, it is not agriculturally exempt from zoning. Not whether or not that holds or not, but there. Section four is basically just establishing the overlay. So basically, that's the abbreviation, and just defining the definition of it in that section. It just says, there's a smart growth conversion, smart growth overlay, mill conversion overlay, floodplain overlay. It just defines that there's an overlay. Certainly you can define, we can define an overlay for dispensing, different from manufacturing as well. It doesn't have to be the same one. The intent in this document here was just for dispensing. Number five is following up with basically defining on the map. So this is just a holding spot for defining where on the map it should go. Once we adopt a map, the ordinance would be updated to say, "Is a map dated X." Number six, housekeeping, just saying that it's a prohibited home occupation. As seen in some other, yeah, as seen in some other, in some other ordinances. So it's like, okay, make sure, update that section, too. Number seven's the large one, and that is the actually establishment of the overlay And the criteria number seven was gathered from at least five different communities, trying to look at their criteria for special permits, and their criteria for site plan review, and their criteria for submission of the documents and what to submit. And, and again, importantly, establishing, it's just establishing the zoning overlay. The medical marijuana overlay district's established as an overlay district. We wanted to clarify for dispensing and retail sales, and really not for manufacturing.
Which isn't in your copy.
Which is not in your copy. There. Clarify that. It goes down into the purpose statement. Within the purpose statement, it says, "Halfway through, given the RMD shall be limited in number and regulated by DPH, these zoning regs intend to permit them in locations suitable for lawful medical marijuana facilities where there's access to regional roadways, where they may be readily monitored by law enforcement for health and public safety purposes, and to minimize adverse impacts on adjacent properties. Residential neighborhoods, historic districts, schools, playgrounds, and other locations where minors congregate by regulating the siting, design, placement, security, and removal of RMDs." Most of the languages in the other zoning ordinances excluded residential. There was one that included residential, which was, seemed more stringent, so included it here, as for, for consideration, as well as the setbacks. Definitions, we put in some further definition, as was within another ordinance. We can talk with Solicitor Barrett on whether or not this is redundant or can be combined with the definition in there. That's a matter, like a housekeeping piece. The special permit criteria is the 181644, which basically establishes, "The RMDs may be permitted pursuant to a special permit and site plan review granted by the planning board. In granting a special permit for an RMD, in addition to the general criteria for issuance of a special permit set forth in section 18193 of the ordinance, the planning board shall find the following criteria are met." So this is where it's defining that all of these conditions have to be met in order to permit the use. So it talks about locating an area to serve currently does not have reasonable access to medical marijuana, as established by mass DPH. B is one definitely up for, for discussion. "The RMD is located at least 300 feet distant from the following uses, we would say within the city limits." One, two, goes into three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, and all usually are all within the typical DPH setbacks, talking about where similar facilities where minors may congregate. Number 10 is an addition, I believe from like the city of Springfield, again, which included more setbacks and considerations for residential uses. So this proposes a 300-foot setback from residential uses in addition to usually parks and playgrounds. DPH regulations now have 500 feet if there's no zoning ordinance from items like one through nine.
And.
But certainly you can look at 500 feet, but if we were look, the thought was if we're looking at an overlay district, which is a smaller spot, that you don't want to use 500 feet and zone it out. So you might want to look at a smaller setback distance if you're using, looking at an overlay.
Even the 300 feet would probably require someone in planning or community development, a city employee, to go and show exactly where you could fit, to make sure that it's, you know, practical for it to be somewhere. So.
Yes. It was, if, I'm not sure if you want to talk about the setback. You want to just go through.
Let me just go through and then.
Okay. So setback is, setback is one. We did, in item C, we talked about this distance of how you determine the setback. There are two trains of thought. The distance under this section is measured in a straight line from the nearest point of the property line of the protected use, identified in that section above. It says, "To the nearest point of the property line of the proposed RMD." When that being said, it's property line to property line, and we said 300 feet. But if you're looking at an industrial use or something in an overlay, and it's abutting a residential parcel, it's zero. It's no 300 feet. You almost need to skip a lot, a parcel in between in order to make that work. So the thought was, maybe keep the section from the nearest point of the property line of the protected use to the building of the RMD, at least to give some flex, rather than the lot line of the RMD, because again, you're property line to property line, and I think we'd just zone it right out.
You could think about like a 10-acre industrial site, where the building's on one far end of the site, and there's a residential use on the far end of that 10-acre site. Could be 1,000 feet away, could be 2,000 feet away. But that definition, if we don't change it to, to the nearest point of the building of the facility, then even though it's nowhere near that, that protected use, you wouldn't be able to do it. So it's more of a, I guess, administrative matter.
Right. On how to apply it. D, again, most of these were taken from the different ordinances. If it wasn't there in someone, someone else's ordinance, it was put there. So that was just, there's the maximum criteria that we can look at that was found, at least within the ones that were looked at. This one applied a 25% reduction if it demonstrates that it would be effectively prohibited within the municipality. So that's kind of like the hardship of maybe it didn't meet the 300 feet, it could be reduced somewhat. Let's see. Convenience, safe, and secure access and egress for clients and employees. Transportation, which we always look at. F, the building site has been designed to be compatible with other buildings in the area. Negative to mitigate aesthetic impacts. RMD shall be located only in a permanent building and not within any mobile facility. Thought that was interesting. Except where explicitly stated or otherwise in this section, RMD shall conform to the dimensional requirements of the uses within the base or overlying zoning districts. Meaning if it's in an industrial zone, there aren't, it's like 20 feet of frontage and you're good to go. If it's in, or it's actually in central business district. But if it's in an overlay that encompasses, just saying it, a residential area, and it says 150 feet of frontage is needed for that area, for the, then 150 feet of frontage is needed.
And, and that ensures it conforms to the surrounding uses.
Talks, standard loading refuse service areas. These are all things that are all looked at in special permit. J was interesting, that could be also just, you know, considered. Establish, an RMD established for retail sales shall not have a gross floor area in excess of 5,000 square feet. So saw that there's, there was a, a number put on it, so you wouldn't see an RMD like as big as big lots. You know, you can say, you can kind of, at least a dispensary, you may see manufacturing, but a dispensary kind of like, do you want to keep it to a particular size? You know, that's negligible. Could be 5,000, could be 10,000, but it's, there was a number taken again from another suggestion.
Minimum.
There's no minimum, it can be, the city can be more restrictive on its criteria. So what, if you can say 1,200.
There's no minimum, but again, you need to make sure that there's enough room for them to be able to do business.
You can't say 5 square feet.
Right. They have to have.
I don't know what's small enough, but even say 1,000 square feet might be too small for a use like that.
They may have.
I don't know.
To meet DPH requirements, they probably have, have certain rooms for keeping things, security, passing room between rooms, and, so they need enough space to do things. This was another one. RMDs shall not be located inside a building containing residential units, including transient housing, such as lodging houses, motels, and dormitories, so that looking like, say, on the first floor, where you have second floor residential, this would say no.
I think it was Council Catty mentioned, Primm at Ox River Street. So that would prohibit it from being in that building.
As well as Main Street. Another one, I think this was Springfield. The applicant has entered into an approved host community agreement. We can, it'd be interesting to be, the, DPH requires a provision of a host community agreement. I'm not sure of the details regarding that, but that could be further defined pursuant to DPH, and defined through the, as approved by the city council. I believe they have to perform the outreach to the city, even at the outset. Provides adequate security measures, ensure no individual participant will pose a direct health, direct threat to the health or safety of other individuals, and the storage and or location of cultivation is adequately secured. That is obviously in DPH, too, but doesn't hurt to say it again. It addresses traffic demand, circulation, parking, queuing, and peak demands. And with dispensary use, I have heard that, yes, it could generate definitely a lot of traffic. So definitely traffic would be something to be looking at between traffic and pattern, and making sure it's in inaccessible locations. All aspects of the use facility relative to acquisition, cultivation, possession, processing, sales, dispensing, or administration must take place at a fixed location within a fully enclosed building, and shall not be visible from the exterior of the business. The next section goes into the actual application. It says, "Please submit all this material, even if you submitted it to DPH, submit it to us. Please also tell us who all your offices are, organizations, representatives, notarized, so we know who you are. Floor plans, detailed site plans, safety, traffic flow, pedestrian movements, parking and loading, design and appearance of the building, water supply, drainage, and lighting." E is security measures, including employee security policies approved by DPH. An active security system shall be required for all locations, and all security measures shall be approved by fire and police chiefs. This is an opportunity here, we can add any, the other additional criteria specifically that the fire, police chiefs want to see in every, one of them, or just say according to, just approved by them, depending on the site or location, what they want to see. But it puts their approval as a requirement of those procedures. Provide a copy of emergency procedures, copies of policies, all of these policies and procedures that are provided to DPH, send them to us. Waste disposal procedures, any waivers if DPH had granted them. Description of activities, so please, even in your application, describe what it is you intend to do. Sometimes they just like to talk, but we would like to see it in writing. In the service area, so a map describing the area they're proposing to be served by this RMD, again, back to this description of the need. Even though DPH may say, "Yes, site one in this area," doesn't mean it has to be in that particular area. The next section goes into site plan review and the conditions. So when we conduct a site plan review, we should also be looking, at the same time looking at this special permit, we shall impose at least these conditions, and more, but at least these have to be included. About the site design, traffic flow, safety, air quality, environmental character of the area. Talking about hours of operation, home deliveries. They may only involve in that use as permitted by its definition, it may not include other businesses or services, so, you know, no t-shirt sales or anything like that. It'd be specific towards what it is that you could sell specific to that use, so. be specific towards what it is that you could sell specific to that use. So no e-cigarettes, you know, anything else. And again, some of these other criteria about no marijuana shall be smoked, eaten, or otherwise consumed or ingested within the premises, probably should be, or products thereof, you know, but ventilation of the facility. No odor, or its processing can be detected by a person with an unimpaired and otherwise normal sense of smell at the exterior of the medical marijuana business or any adjoining use of property. Thought that was interesting. Said, why not? You're next door and you're smelling it well as the offset, then it could be an issue there. I don't know. Yep, I'm almost done. Filing reports. Shall file a copy of a summary cease and desist, any types of orders issued by DPH. Division of Administrative Law Appeals, building commissioner, police chief. Let's see. Providing the building commissioner, board of health, police chief, name, telephone number of any, of the contact person in the event of any issue, and on and off hours. H talks about the timeline of how long the permit's good for. Five years is a number, and it could be one year, two year, three year. Limiting it to the current applicant. The permit shall lapse upon expert termination of the registration by DPH. Talking about notifying the public officials in, within ceasing their operation or the termination of their operation with DPH. Shall be open to inspection by the fire department, police, building official within 24 hours of notice of requests for such inspection to be made by the department or official. And notifying public officials in 12 hours following a violation or potential violation of any law or criminal or potential criminal activities or attempts of violation of any law at the RMD. Filing an annual report to the building commissioner and zoning administrator every year. Files with state laws. Talking about permit revocation. If it's dispensing, not being used for medicinal purposes. If the registration has not been renewed or revoked, transferred to another entity or relocated with the site, a new special permit shall be required prior to issuance of a certificate of occupancy. Of course, none shall be issued if it's not properly registered with DPH. The next segment is exemption from the permit requirement, which talks about RMDs that demonstrate they are protected pursuant to agricultural exemption, are not required to obtain a special permit, but shall apply for site plan approval. So at least we set out conditions of site plan approval. Believe it's five acres or larger. If you're agriculturally exempt. It's a protected use, such as a religious or educational institution, agricultural. B is RMDs established only for the cultivation and manufacture related products, not dispensing or retail sales may be cited by right as a manufacturing use in the industrial, light industrial zoning districts pursuant to that table of principal uses. Meeting this criteria is not required to obtain a special permit, but shall apply for site plan approval. Of course, pursuant to our conversation, will be relooked at. It's not, not looking at to allowing it by right and by special permit, that's, language would change. Prohibition against nuisances in surrounding areas, typically is under the proviso of the board of health. Severability standard statement, and just a standard update of the parking requirements table in the regulation.
Council Caddy.
I just want to have a couple of questions. I want to chat for a minute. Under the main natural portion, does that also include food products?
What's that? Does include?
Does that also include food products?
Yes, it's manufacture of the products. So when you talk, it's growing the plants, but it's manufacture of whatever form.
The police itself can't do any stuff until cooking.
But they can manufacture.
Yes.
So just a quick statement.
Pittsburgh has too many multi-zoned areas throughout the city. It would, to, to let a dispensary go into a industrial area or, or, um, neighborhood business area, you, you could. There, I don't think there's a place in the city where you could go that you wouldn't affect children. So having said that, um, a medical marijuana dispensary compared to a recreational marijuana dispensary, it's a destination. You could put it next to the landfill and they're going to do business. So, so what I'm saying is there would be nothing wrong with putting it in one of industrial parks or, or zone it in a small area, because it's a destination. Your, your people who are going to need medical marijuana will go to that location. My worry is if you open that somewhere else, it would be like going to a liquor store and you see young kids hanging out in front of the liquor store and say, hey, can you get me something when you're in there? I'll give you five bucks. That would be my worry about putting it in a central business district where you're going to have people that need to take it medically, but could also be subject to giving it to someone when they get outside that door. Whereas you get up into an industrial park, you're not going to have, you're not going to have that walk-up traffic. You're not going to have the kids hanging around, you know, looking. And again, it, it goes back to what I said earlier. Nice and cautious, we'll go at this nice and cautious. Let's see how the world, United States figures this out. You know, let's not be the leader in this right now. Let's go-
We're going to have an ordinance. We still have to do the ordinance in the next 90 days.
But you know what I'm saying? You know, if you, you, we could zone it somewhere, and if someone is going to open a facility, they're going to open a facility there. No problem, they're going to do business. Because, because that facility isn't going to be Pittsburgh people. It's going to be the greater community. If they, wherever these companies decide to land for a dispensary, it's going to be central Massachusetts. You know, it could be in Lemester, it could be in Groton, it could, you know, people are going to go there as a destination. So it just makes sense to me. We put, we put it at an area where we feel it's safe, safe for everybody.
I believe it was one, like a adequate dis, distance was like 15 miles, within 15 miles to the scene from the one dispensary to another. Wouldn't see two in a community.
I wouldn't think so. I mean, if you're going recreational, that's going to be different.
Well, that's completely, that's not even, that's not even this. That's a whole nother discussion.
Yes.
Council Dean Tally.
Highlight my frustration with dispensaries. Mr. Barrett, clarify, what is the state law that, what does the state law say specifically about how many there can be? Is it one per county at least? No more than five? Is that how I understand it, or?
President, I haven't looked at it quite frankly that recently. My recollection and the planning board knows offhand is that there, there would not happen, it could be no more than two per county, I thought, if all do not-
Mr. Fontaine?
One of our members just handed me this. The attorney general noted the act requires DPH to register up to 35 with one center in each county and no more than five per county.
Okay, so, okay, so, so there has to be at least one in the county. Worcester County.
Yes.
Worcester County's a big county, and what's frustrating for me is-
That air right now?
I believe that there's already been some companies fishing around here for a dispensary. I know that, I received a call from a specific company, leaving me a voicemail, asking for my feedback on how I felt about them coming here. Needless to say, I didn't call them back, which I think is an answer enough of them that I don't want them here. But I, as I said earlier, when the law passed, I knew right away, we're going to get it. We're going to get them. And, and-
Doesn't say that one has to be every county, it says one can be.
No, must be.
One has to be in every county. And my issue, my frustration is, there's, there's one, has to be one in every county, and yet, we're it. We're likely going to be it. Out of all the county, all the, all the cities and towns in Worcester County, we're going to be it. Lucky for us. And you know why I have a problem with that? Everyone's going to sit at home and go, wow, these are people who get prescriptions. I'm not against the people who get prescribed by a doctor. My concern is, and you know it's going to happen, in a couple of years, and the chief referenced this earlier, this state, knowing its particular political bent, is going to vote to make it recreational. And once it makes it recreational, guess what? We're going to get those too. And now everyone's just acknowledged here tonight that that's going to be a big problem. So my concern with the medical component of it is if we have so many concerns about making sure the medical is set in place and regulated strongly, as do all of the communities in the country have these regulations, recreational's going to be even more ridiculous. And it goes back to that concern of, Mr. Casas was before the council several weeks ago, when the art museum came before us for a proposal with the CDC to put the artist colony where BF Brown used to be. Mr. Casas made a point at that meeting that what's, is what fuels my fervent opposition to these, these facilities in Pittsburgh, is that he mentioned that there is a lack of balance in the city. There's a lack of balance in the downtown and in the city. And that balance, he said, has not been struck in decades, and that is, we have too many social service agencies and too many large-scale housing projects, and not any business to, not enough business to allow all of these people to, to spend money within the city. So my opposition to that was, well, great, that's all we needed is another housing project. No business. I see the same way here. I'm not equating the two, but my point is, is that this, that there's a hypersensitivity in this city that we are doing more than our fair share to service the needs of other communities. If this was, if there was a way for the city of Pittsburgh right now to say, we will have a medical marijuana dispensary in this city, hell, make it five medical marijuana dispensaries, and they can only service certified Pittsburgh residents, I may be okay with that. But my problem is it's servicing everybody, just like everything else we provide here. And that's the problem I have, is not the service, it's the amount at which we already provide. And it's a level of frustration that I have not been able to get over. And it's clearly evident in how I talk with these matters, but there's a reason why when the law passed, I immediately said to myself, it's coming here. And so as I said earlier, with my direction about the manufacturing, my preference for this is, and I, you went through it very extensively, and you know, it's enough to give you a headache, which is good. I'd like a company who's coming here to want to take a bottle of aspirin before they want to come here breathing all this. All right?
That's a good idea.
And, and, and I'm not afraid to say it, I, because I wanted to ban it outright. I don't want them coming here. So as much as we can get to close to that line that we can't cross, I'm all for it. It's time for other communities in Worcester County to take on these services that is not going to just service Pittsburgh residents. It's going to service everybody's residents. And we have well more, we are well beyond the saturation point. That is why I am strongly in favor of regulating this as strongly as we can. It has nothing to do with people who need medical marijuana. It has nothing to do with medical marijuana in general. It's time for other communities to step up.
If you'd like to see additional provisions in there, certainly let us know what you'd like to see for even, in there. But we're looking at a location right now, because there isn't an ordinance, DPH says it can go anywhere except within 500 feet of those listed uses, you know, excluding the residential, because we were thinking about adding that in. So we're trying to look like right now, okay, right now it's in the book, it's 500 feet from all these things. So right now, so we were looking at regional access points. There was talk previously about medical services district. That's way up north in the woods. It's not regionally accessible. You have to go through the middle of the city to get there. It's not on and off the highway. Keep it regional, keep it on and off. There was a thought there with that, but because of the amount of traffic it would generate and the amount, we talk about public safety, and that it'd be in a visible location because of the type of activity, because of, because of the volume of money being exchanged as well.
There are police departments throughout the country that are against these things. And even the federal government doesn't allow it. There's a reason for that. That's why I'm concerned. Not because of the element or the people that use it, it's because there is a genuine consensus by those who are in the game that this could breed problems. And I'm not worried about the people who are allotted by and who get a prescription. I'm worried about the people who don't get a prescription, who somehow get access to these things. And that was my issue with the manufacturing, with security, people going and trying to break in and steal stuff, and the abuse, as there is abuse everywhere. But again, the, the central issue is Pittsburgh is beyond the saturation point. So if the consensus of the council and the planning board is, this isn't strong enough, I'm all ears, let's make it even stronger. By all means, whatever we got to do. That may not stop these businesses from coming here. Knowing our luck, it won't. But, you know, I'm already getting calls from businesses. It's like, you know, is Pittsburgh Worcester County? Apparently we are. I don't know if anybody else is getting calls, but surprise, surprise, we're the ones first on the call list. So let's do all we can to, to make these guys see what hell they got to go through before they come here. That's what I want. Thank you.
If it appears that this document is restrictive, there's reason for that. That's why we drafted it to the debate. However, we all know that there's guidelines that say, no, you can't be restrictive at all. It wasn't that long ago that this council was debating, not this council, but another council, was debating adult entertainment. So we came up with a plan. And the plan was to make it as restrictive as we can, only put it in the area where the president was. We're trying to be as restrictive as we can with this. However, we're also being told there are 90 days before we have to do this. So it's a, it's a double issue.
That's why I said, as close to the red line as we can get. There's a red line, obviously. Let's get as close to it as we can get. Thank you.
Council Green.
A couple of questions. Under the definitions, um, would these facilities, would these facilities also have the ability to sell papers, pipes, the food items, and offer like the water pipe bars, or not?
You can't, I know you can't actively smoke, eat, any of that on premises with this ordinance the way it's written.
Okay.
So they couldn't do anything there? Whether they could sell them?
Related supplies, so unless it's related to how, and they can, take it many different forms, there's no restriction on how?
We didn't create the definition, DPH did. Definition of what they consider them legally allowed to sell is, this definition is from them.
Okay, so in these facilities, they would be able to sell papers, pipes, food items?
I'm not certain, but it looks like it reads that way.
Okay, you just couldn't consume those things there?
Mm-hmm.
Food items, okay. Then my other concern is under section, under the application section, G specifically. A copy of the policies and procedures for patient or personal caregiver home delivery. So I, I can see this going bad on so many different levels with, you know, now we're, now we're going to employ, you know, Uber drivers to deliver medical marijuana to people who supposedly can't get out and get it, even though we're supposed to be able to offer them, you know, easy access to these facilities.
Just to answer your question, I think, I remember from reading the long, tedious document before, and Paula can probably correct me. DPH allows someone who can't physically get there to authorize someone to go on their behalf. And I think that's what that is.
It's have to be granted a hardship cultivation, cultivation registration through DPH in order to have someone go and pick it up for them.
And would that, okay, so that, that's good that that's in place, but would that be a type of a document that would be a picture ID with proof of residency? I mean, can we get that restricted on it, or no?
It's in that document somewhere.
It's in a DPH about registration of qualifying patients and personal caregivers, responsibilities of personal caregivers, registration of dispensary agents.
Well, the answer to your question is kind of simple.
They do provide delivery services as well.
We can't deny it. So all we're saying is give us a copy of the documents that DPH requires to allow you to do it. That's all we're saying.
So how are you going to do it?
Because we can't say you can't do it, because DPH allows it. So we're saying, whatever they require of you, you have to provide to the city of Pittsburgh, to show us that you, you can legally do that.
Okay, we know how you're doing it. So we know if you're not doing it right, we'll step and say something about it.
Right, but I worry about all the different services that we offer, and we can all see on a daily basis getting abused. And, I mean, once it's happening, how do you take it back? I mean, you know, how do you, how do you stop it? Unless there's somebody up there who knows this particular person. I mean, it, again, this is a whole huge mass of the subject.
The intent of that clause is just to improve the transparency, so that DPH has their own regulations about how they can do that, so that we know what those regulations are, so we can help enforce those regulations and be, are knowing when they're doing it wrong.
Anything they have in their ordinance, in that packet, we can clarify, we can't- Anything they have in their ordinance, in that packet, we can clarify, we can't take away.
Okay.
So I think that's really what that comes down to.
And under the, the special permit conditions, this number K specifically, when it talks about the cessation of the operation, but I don't see anything about the process of closing or the process on how that's done. And again, I can't imagine that, I can't imagine that a dispensary would ever go out of business, but in the likelihood that it would, is there, is there a process of closing these facilities?
It'll be non-transferable.
Okay.
No, but I think that's a good thing to bring up, that if they do, say, go bankrupt and go out of business, do they have to maintain security at the site until all the product is removed or?
Right, I would just like a process on the closing if something, you know, my God, if a fire happens and then they're displaced, or, you know, how we go about doing that?
We can take a look, see what DPH has and...
Could only hope.
They have effective denial or renewal of a revocation of registered marijuana dispensary registration, revocation of dispensary agent registration, and surrender of a registration requirements in their regulations.
All right.
When you go on tonight, you think this stuff will make you, Dean Aspern, read that document? It's intense.
And then my only other point would be, and again, I don't, I don't even know if you could take it seriously, but, you know, we have a dump site up on Route 31 that potentially may be closing, and I would see no reason why we couldn't put a dispensary right on top of the dump there. It's got highway access. There's no, you know, no schools around, no kids are going to go up there. So it's just a point to consider that we do have some areas that out, on the outskirts of town, that we could, if we had to, put these type of facilities. And I agree that there's lots of other communities that are in Worcester County that should be entertaining this as well.
It doesn't have to be an existing building. It could be a vacant lot where they could construct a facility.
Well, not just one lot. Just one lot, you would be effectively...
I'm just saying whatever lot, whatever, it doesn't have to be a vacant lot zone.
Right, I'm just saying you're going to make one lot the zoning district, that's all I'm saying.
Right, correct.
It would have to be a bigger area, but yes.
Counselor Joseph.
Under the application clause, it would be, or an otherwise, a lot different. She decided a lot of the same. Is there regulations, like query checks and stuff, that can be, is it, is it in their federal, in their regulation, they can't have criminal felony records or?
I believe they talk about the qualifications of the, of the persons opening it and look at that, just like they're looking at the gambling casinos for all the background checks and everything.
Can that provision also be into the manufacturing facility? I know you have the site review, but can you also require them to give us a copy of all of their agents?
Yep. And if we're, if we're looking at special permit for the manufacturing, then all of these would all apply to the manufacturing as well.
And I guess my question to Mr. Barrett would be, can we continue this discussion on regulating them any more than we would regulate CVS, who dispenses Valium and opiates or Planned Parenthood that does by right medical office downtown? What makes this business any different than CVS or Planned Parenthood that we can further regulate them by constitution?
Well, I might, President, the, I think the concern here is that you have a lot of regulation on this proposed or allowed use by the Department of Public Health. So that starts out to the extent that you could regulate this more than you could some other type of use, and that goes beyond the pale of what, quite frankly, a court of law would say makes it prohibitive. And this is all very vague, but, you know, if you were trying to regulate, I think you can, you have to be careful not to distinguish too much out of the desire to maybe limit this type of use, that you're putting greater, much greater burdens on this type of use to make it so that it is prohibitive. Maybe that didn't answer your question, but unfortunately, it's something that ultimately might not be determinable unless you're in a court of law.
If CVS is able to operate on every corner under law and dispense drugs that are legally prescribed by a doctor, and they have their regulations as to how they go about dispensing them and who they can dispense them to, what their security levels are and all of that other stuff, how does that make this, how can, how can we do this any different than an opiate?
Well, I think that it is, it is slightly different because the folks that can do this are not just anyone. Under the, the state law, it has to be a, I believe it's a nonprofit entity, it has to have a permission or license from the DPH. So it's not like any general business person can just decide, "I want to open up a registered medical marijuana dispensary." So there's some built-in limitations on who is going to be able to do this. I mean, it's, I think it's somewhat a philosophical question, Counselor, whether or not, you know, as you say, what's the difference here between a business that's selling marijuana or a business that's selling oxycontin or some other prescription-type drug, if this is a prescribed drug? You could treat it the same way. I mean, for any applicant who qualifies to do it, you could have very little restriction. But it sounds to me that the council wants to restrict it, and I think you can restrict it. And the only benchmark I'd have to say that there is, I mean, the council has to resolve for itself the philosophical issues, but as far as, you know, the only benchmark that there is in terms of limitation, the restrictions, is that it's not so restricted as to be deemed by a court to effectively be prohibited. If it's so narrowly, if the zone is so narrowly drawn, or the requirements are so burdensome that it's effectively preventing any real opportunity for someone who is registered to come here, then it might, the whole ordinance could be thrown out. So I'd have to leave to the council that, you know, if you felt that, you know, there's a distinction, and I don't know if I could make it, between this type of a facility and a, another drugstore.
Will these facilities be manned by registered pharmacists to dispense the drugs?
No, but in the packet, it says that the personnel will be trained by Department of Public Health personnel.
So there isn't a requirement, they'll be dispensing a drug, but it's not regulated like a drugstore, that they would have to be a pharmacist overlooking the people that are selling it?
No, it has the dis...
Registration of dispensary agents is a process or procedure for that under DPH.
Okay. Counselor? Counselor Boesman.
Quick question.
Counselor, you've, in two years, you've never had a quick question. Don't, you're not going to fool us, okay?
You're telling us the state's telling us we have to do this stuff, medical marijuana. I got nothing, no problem with that. If it becomes legal, great.
We don't have to do anything, and then it's just allowed within 500 feet of certain uses.
Well, my question, if there, if there are violations, that they get caught selling medical marijuana to my counsel on the right?
Mm-hmm.
And he's a minor. Who gets to give the punishment? Is it the state? Like, if we sell cigarettes to kids, we give them a warning. If they do it again, we pull their license for so many days, and if they do it again, they don't have the right to sell cigarettes. The same thing with alcohol. Am I right or wrong? Is the city of Pittsburgh going to be able to enforce these kind of rules, or is it the state that does it?
No idea.
No idea?
Again, it's probably in the document. I mean, honestly, it's, they have a pretty thorough process as to what happens when, you know, who sells what, meaning their, their agents, how they sell it, who can sell it, you know, all that's, as far as exact, specific, I don't know. Yeah, I don't know. I would assume, yes, I would assume our local police would, I defer to it.
It's going to fall under the same guidelines as the state law, whether it's a minor, if it's within the prescribed amount, if it's more than the prescribed amount?
If someone sells Percocet and they didn't have a prescription and they're walking around with it, then I assume it's the, it's the same idea.
Oh, I just thought I had. Don't get me wrong, I'm not against it, helping all people. The town of Newton already opened up a place, and I saw it on Channel 5. It wasn't like the floodgates were open and the whole thing was, oh, the parking lot, there was one guy that went there and that was it. It was on TV, I mean.
All set, Counsel?
It follows the state guidelines that are regulated by the local police, similar to the fact that years ago...